Sound on? All right. Good evening, everyone. Six o'clock, Public Safety Meeting Committee meeting. Calling that to order. And I'll open this up for discussion.
All right. Well, we sent out to all of you last week, draft ordinance revision of the ATV and golf carts ordinances that we currently have on file. I think it's probably most appropriate if Warby and Don kind of lead this conversation. But essentially, what we're asking the committee to consider is allowing the use of ATVs and golf carts on city streets. Currently, they're allowed in a very regulated and very specific manner, which has, I would say, been sort of a burden to manage. And we have gotten quite a few requests from members of the public to take a look at this again. So with that, I'll turn it over to Warby and Don and let them kind of guide you through what the language says and their thoughts, and we can go from there.
Good evening. If everybody remembers back here approximately five years ago when the current ATV ordinance was passed, what we did there is we allowed people that owned ATVs to take them from their residence or place of storage outside the city limits. By doing this, we required them to pay, to get a permit from the city. First year was a hundred dollars, second following years was twenty dollars. And this would allow the residents to drive their ATV basically without trailering it outside into the county where it's currently legal to ride. And having that said, we probably have anywhere from fifteen people that took advantage of that situation, fifteen to twenty over the last five years, that had taken advantage of that and acquired permits. Now, during that time, this issue never really made anybody happy. It didn't make the people, it didn't make the people that didn't like the ATVs on city streets, didn't make them happy because we still allowed it, as well as it didn't make the people that had actual ATVs happy because it was so restrictive in the movements that basically it left the residents paying for additional license above and beyond the required state license, just to be able to go out into the county. So over the last five years, we've had zero issues with ATVs in town. The ATV community has been very respectful of our ordinances and obeying them. And so with the state, at the time of our current ordinance, there was only certain intersections that ATV users could use to cross the Highway 71 or 18. And there was only, I believe, there were six intersections in town that would allow that movement going across the highway. So what they have done is relinquished that, and they've opened that up so just basically saying anybody can cross at a ninety-degree angle of Highway 71 and 18 at approved, at intersections. So with that being said, I'd like to see the ATVs be allowed in town, on city streets, with the Highway 71 and 18, of course, being exempt because state law does not allow them to ride them on the highway. But it does allow for crossing of the highway. I'd like to get, part of this ordinance, I'd like to get rid of the permits that the city requires now and allow people only to purchase the state's required permit now to register their ATVs. And I just don't think there's a reason to have two permits going on the same, on the same vehicle, just because we're riding on city streets. So that's what I'm asking of the council right now.
Don, do you have anything to add to that?
Everything the chief has said is accurate. There was quite a lot of agonizing and discussion when the council adopted the ordinance five years ago. There were, there were concerns about safe operation of ATVs. But as the chief has explained, experience has been good. I think probably they're a lot safer now even than they were five years ago. So I don't have any objections, so long as the council understands that this ordinance will make it wide open. You can see an ATV going about anywhere in town except down the highways.
What about the helmets, Mark?
No helmets are required right now. Special requirements such as sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, you have to have a valid driver's license. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are required to get the safety certificate from the state to be driving it, otherwise you'd be eighteen to drive the ATV. Mufflers have to be equipped, as well as lighting devices have to be on, on the ATV as well, so.
I think, don't the mufflers have to be stock? They can't be aftermarket cans that are really loud and noxious?
Correct, correct.
I had mine out today to scrape snow off of a rental and from my store and stuff like that. And I've got the flashing orange lights for that purpose. Those aren't necessary with this, right? And blinkers aren't necessary, stuff like that? They'd be nice, but they're not mandatory?
Correct. The, the, the compass we have, if you're going to be removing snow on the sidewalks or you're driving on the streets, they're, they're required to have a, a yellow flashing light being visible by all points of the compass. But if you're not in the actual act of removing snow, that is, that is not required. So speed limits are all the same as, as the roadways. There's no timeframe for what they can be driven on, so they can be driven 24 hours a day. Basically, just like a motor vehicle.
Okay.
Nice.
I guess I have one other question. Not that this ties into what we're doing here in the city. It does a little bit, but it doesn't have any bearing on it. But what's the county rules? Do you know off the top of your head? Are they able to run down gravel and blacktop, everything except highways?
Correct.
They are now?
They're, they're the exact same on the roadways. They can't use them on the highway. They can only make a direct crossing of the highway. And their rules are only from sunrise to sunset. So actually, ours in the city would be more open and less regulated than what it is actually out in the county.
Okay.
Mark, can you share, you reached out to some other communities for guidance. Can you, can you just share who you visited with?
Yeah, we reached out to Milford and Spirit Lake and Okoboji, Clay County, and looked at, took a look at all of their ordinances. I talked to their chiefs of police. Everybody seems to think right now they've had good experiences with the ATVs. They all, they all said it was something that a lot of people took advantage of at first, and now they've seen quite a reduction in it. You know, I think it was new and it was a fad, and so they, they used them quite a bit, but, but now it's definitely lower than what it was. Now, that's not to say we're not going to have a problem or that we'll never have an accident with an ATV. They're just like motor vehicles. And what I want to try to do is, is, is promote is, is rider accountability. No different than anything else that we choose to ride. You know, would an ATV more, be more dangerous to ride than in a motor vehicle or regular motor vehicle? Of course, we're exposed, be just like a motorcycle from impact standards that way. But there's definitely some issues with ATVs, you know, flipping over, turning over, they're higher profile. But, but this is what rider accountability is for, and I believe so far we've seen that with the people that have, that have ridden here. And I think that the other surrounding communities have done the same.
I was here when we, when we did this ordinance before, but, but at that time, the, the council weighed very heavily on it. But what has changed in your mind, because you were not advocating for, for this back then, you were more advocating to not, not allow them? So what has changed in your philosophy on, on ATVs and, and, and the, and the golf carts?
Well, back then, if you remember right, I was, I was, I was, wanted the ATVs except the fact that the state would just not allow us the bridge. The bridge was my hangup last time, and I felt like we would be setting the people up for failure here going across the bridge. But after, during those five years, we've had such great respect of the laws and ordinances here in Spencer from the ATV community, the people that have taken out the permits, that we've had zero problems with that. And, and so that's definitely, that's definitely influenced, as well as looking at these other communities and the, and the very little problems that they've had. I think people like a leisure lifestyle. They want things easy. And they want to be able to just ride up to the, to the coffee shop or whatever, and if they have their four-wheeler or side-by-side with them, they want to be able to just do that. And with least amount of restrictions, and so far, I think that ATV community has definitely respected those ordinances and, and, and we haven't had anybody riding across the bridge on a consistent basis. Not to say we didn't have a complaint here or there, but we really don't see that hardly at all here in Spencer. It's been very, very good compliance.
There is.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Ron. There is no way to get across the bridge. We can't take the trail over, right? So north, north side of the bridge, you're stuck. South side, you're stuck.
Correct. The easiest way to get around to the north or south side would you have to take the, the Beltway out in the county to get, to get out and around?
Question, the trails will not be involved on this, right, Amanda? Or with this, they cannot still ride because it's a motor vehicle?
Yep. So it's just streets? The other thing, just to reiterate what Warby said earlier, the state changed the law also about how ATVs can cross highways, where before we had to designate certain intersections where they could cross, which oftentimes can lead to some confusion and enforcement challenges, where now as long as it's a direct crossing, riders can use any intersection to cross. So that does make it a little bit easier on our end to make sure that the rules are being followed.
I agree. You know, five years ago, I was in support of allowing the ATVs open, you know, but we had a council back then, which had their legitimate arguments on, on Clarus and them not recommending them on highways and stuff like that.
I'm not on this committee, but neither is Ron, and neither is Tom. But we're listening in to figure out.
George, your mic's on.
Yeah. So going back to that, it was a hard decision because... Am I still on there?
You're good, Ron.
Okay, so, so there were some safety issues and Steve, Bongars, and, and they rightfully argued, and I think, you know, the best we, at the time, we thought we could do was, was to put in those fees, and I didn't like the fees at the time either. I, I thought they were restrictive and stuff. And, and our hope was that we would come revisit it after we had some bad. I think, Mark, that's kind of what, where we stood at that time. I, I mean, I think it took a little longer than, than maybe we thought, but I am happy to see that we are proceeding forward with it. And, and Mark's right. If we have problems and they have to give them tickets, then we, we, the troublemakers, we give them the tickets, and, and that is what we do as a society. We don't blame everybody for being bad drivers, just because of a few bad ones, though. I'm agreeing that we should go forward with this.
Amanda, or Tracy, I guess, Tracy's meeting. I would just like to say I appreciate all the staff's work, Don and Amanda and the chief, digging into this issue and researching and reaching out to other communities, as well as the community members who are passionate about this. I know it's been, since I was elected anyway, they had been reached out and they've been very patient with us. And, you know, it's a, it's just not a decision we can make overnight, and I think we've deliberated well on it. We're well informed on it. And I think the council has enough information to make a recommendation and make a vote on it. And so I just want to thank everybody that's been involved in the process and appreciate your time.
I'm pretty excited to see this go forward. I think it's great. And I will have, I will say that I've had a number of people that have contacted me about it as well over the last year and a half I've been on council.
Tracy, do you have a recommendation from the, the three that sit on the committee, right, to move it forward? Is that correct?
So, yeah, so we'd like a recommendation. And then I'd also, if you think it's appropriate, if, if you're going to move forward, we can place it on the agenda for Monday's council meeting for a first filing.
So this takes three filings, correct? Okay. I would give my recommendation on it, and I believe I sit on the committee, correct?
Yep, it's Ron, Tom, and Tracy.
Any other comments on that?
I give it a second, if you need it.
Tracy, I'm not sure if I can comment or not, but in the, just the description on the ordinance on seven dash fourteen dash two, it says altering vehicles shall not be operated on any public property, streets. Do we need to take the streets out of that since that's probably more of a question for Don?
Yeah, I, I saw that, Donovan, I saw that tonight, too. I'll check it. I think maybe in the actual amendment, we take care of that.
Well, there's one there that says what you can do, but then it's just the streets word. I, I didn't know if it needed to be lined off with that.
It, it may need to be. I'll, I'll check that before Monday.
Any other comments or questions on that?
Not, then we make the recommendation that we go ahead and move it forward to the council?
Sounds unanimous.
All right. Well, I will, like we did from, from the Parks Committee, although it took a little bit of time, I'll type up notes from the discussion and send it out to the rest of the council with your recommendation, and we'll plan to have this as an agenda item under new business on Monday night then.
Amanda, the, the next part to this is the golf carts. I don't know if anybody is, is taking a look at that or not. But the golf carts is also a section that I wanted to visit here at the same time. Basically, it's pretty close to the same thing as the ATVs. Right now, currently, the, how the ordinance reads is, if you're basically, to sum it up, if you're within a one or two-block radius of the golf cart or golf courses, then you're allowed to ride the golf cart there and back. And so I want to allow the golf carts the, the same, the same way the ATVs are. I want them to be allowed to be driven on city streets, making the direct crossings of Highway 71 and 18 again. But the difference is, is it's usually the golf carts don't have the lighting on that, so it's a sunrise, a sunset ordinance where they'd be allowed. They have to have a slow-moving vehicle sign and a safety flag on, which is what our current ordinance says now. But the same, the same restrictions apply. I have to have a valid driver's license, be driven to the, on the right side of the road as, as tightly as possible, far right, but basically doing the same thing as the ATVs.
What if they are equipped with lights, Mark? Is it a blanket? Or if they're equipped with the lights, is it separate or not?
Well, the way we have it written now, which is a sunrise, a sunset.
Blanket, okay.
On a question, I know we can, we can pass these, but if we get a, a major problem with, with people having a lot of trouble, we can always abandon this, this policy and go back to this not allowing these things to cross. So I think we, as the towns will have to make it appropriate to citizens that they have to appreciate the rules and, and follow them, correct?
Correct.
I think it comes down, for the general public, it comes down to tolerances. You know, we haven't, we haven't seen the golf carts on there, so it's going to take a little bit for the general public to get used to. But similar to bicycles, they're, they're, the golf carts are slower moving, and we just have to be tolerant to them as well. And, and I think it'll, I think it'll be fine, to be honest with you, but time can tell. And if we run into problems, I'll definitely be the first one to report to you the issues that we're having.
Mark, would they fall into the category of an ATV if they were licensed and had a licensed driver and had the lights and all that? Would they fit that, that they could travel anywhere then? Or not? Are they going to be classified as golf carts?
Currently, the state of Iowa does not allow them to get registrations on golf carts, and that's where some of it falls into. And so right now, it, it just seems that, you know, as far as we won't, the golf carts, one major difference is that we don't allow them to park on city streets because there is no registration. And so now if we have a problem, now we can't track down the owners and so forth and so on. So that's, that's the one big hurdle, is we just can't get them registered. And I don't, I don't think that we want to start requiring the permits like we've done in the past for the ATVs and duplicate that now for golf carts. I don't believe that's something that the city wants to be involved in.
Thank you. That clears that up for me.
But, but the golf carts before, we, we had it located just to go to the golf course. Now it'll be, it'll be able to go to the grocery store. It'll be able to go to any, pretty much any business around the community. So I mean that, you know, before it was strictly for the golf course. And that, I am right on that. It can go longer in the community besides driving across the bridge.
You can't go, you can't go across the bridge yet. You can't use Highway 71 and 18, but you can ride on city streets. So like you said, if you want to go to the coffee shop, you want to go to the grocery store and make a, you know, a trip there, you, you definitely can. And this, you know, I, you see a lot of other communities, especially retirement communities, vacation communities, having and utilizing golf carts. And I think you've seen a lot of success in those areas. I visited one of those here a few years ago, and what I noticed about it was, was the majority of people were using them, and it was so quiet in the neighborhood. It was just, it was so peaceful. So I definitely think they have, they have a place.
So the lakes, you've talked to the lakes, correct, Mark? And because they've been implementing this for a couple of years, the golf carts. And, and have they talked about any problems or, or any issues that they see on the golf carts?
They haven't seen much of all, anything at all. One town said they had, I think, one or two incidents where some kids were riding the golf cart where they weren't supposed to be, but very far and few in between have been the issues.
Is the, if, if the golf carts are equipped with the proper lighting and stuff, is that something you're open to? Or, I'm not asking because I want to change it. I'm just curious if people do ask that, because you do see a lot of those that are equipped that way now.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that I would be opposed to it by any means. I think just in general, the golf carts don't have the lights, and because you're moving, you know, the ATVs have a, have the ability to travel at most times inside the city limits in Spencer, at the speed limit or close to the, the traffic flow, where the golf carts do not. And so that's where I think you're, probably your biggest concern would be, is especially at night, even though they would have a slow-moving vehicle sign or something like that, I think there would be maybe a potential issue there. I don't know if it's... Yeah, I'm fifty-fifty with it, to be honest with you. I mean, there's some pros and, and cons on, on that as far as night.
Okay. And you're assuming that they're going to go at the speed limit unless Mark White gets his hands on them?
Yeah, unless they're souped up, that would be, that'd be right.
Mark's not even on the ball to defend himself.
I know.
Yeah, Mark, Warby, I would, I would assume, I think that is a good idea, not running them at night. I, if you, because if you come up to them on the, even if you're at twenty-five and they're going five or ten, you can be on them before you can really probably see the slow-moving vehicle. And, you know, there's the flashing light to warn you that they're, that they're going at a slower speed. You know, if you have a truck or something, they have blinking lights that at least warn you that there, there's a slow-moving vehicle. So I would probably prefer trying it from sunrise to sunset, and maybe possibly down the road, possibly going farther if, you know, technology and, and stuff allows it to be safer.
Well, you know, the, the council, we've definitely moved in progressive steps, you know, and we didn't just jump right into anything. You know, the last, the last ordinance change, I think it was five years ago, and you basically have tested those waters, and we, we've taken progressive steps to keep building on that. So I think you're right, Ron.
I would agree with the sunrise to sunset now as well.
Well, if you're looking for somebody to make a motion to move this out of committee, I would do that. Tracy? In favor?
I'll second that.
What's that? Oh, I'm not now. I believe all we need is the, the recommendation to move forward.
Yeah, I just gave a recommendation.
We're, we're all in agreement with that? And I would make that recommendation. Go ahead and move it to the agenda for next Monday.
All right.
Hey, Don, I do have one question here for you, and I think that might come up down the road with this ordinance. The ATVs ordinance, could we specify, you know, we have that section in there about all lighting requirements as, as, I think, I believe it's all lighting and safety equipment required by motor vehicles under Iowa law. Should we specify so that the, that ATV riders know exactly what lights are required? Or should we specify headlights, taillights, brake lights, those kind of things on there just to, just to simplify things so we don't have an issue down the road? And, and so that people are compliant?
They sure can.
It's probably a good idea and, and maybe, you know, still include the, I, I think it's already in there if I remember right. It's been a while since I read it, a few days, but the yellow flashing lights for snow is still in there, right?
Right.
Yeah. So I just had a question pop up via text about this. The, there's the city permit, but that won't be anymore, correct?
Right.
Correct, correct.
All right. So it's just registering at the county? Okay.
Correct. All it would be, would be the state registration for the ATVs.
It's like fifteen or twenty bucks, isn't it? It's minimal, right? Thirty?
I, no, I think it's, well, last time I registered mine was, I think it was fifteen bucks, I think, something like that. It was very, very minimal.
Well, Tracy, I don't think we have any other agenda items, so however you want to finish up the meeting.
I'd, I'd better ask for items for future agendas if anyone has any. I'd get, I'd, I better ask for items for future agendas if anyone has any.
Sounds like we have to build a bridge. Sounds like we need a bridge from uh north and south Spencer, Spencer that the golf carts can go over.
Oh, I'm sure Rotary will do that. They like, they like to do bridges.
All right. Tracy, would you wrap this up? Too smart.
I would entertain that motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Stay safe, stay healthy.